Twenty twenty-two. At five thirty P M. Uh, this is a special meeting of the permanent municipal building committee of the town of Gledyard being held via Zoom. Uh, the agenda was posted with Zoom link for um members of the community to uh to join us. All right, uh, with that, uh, I call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a roll call, starting with myself, Steve Justwick's chair. Gary Schneider, remember?
Kate Topama Herb, member.
George Jose, member.
Dan Hessler, O N G.
I don't see Steve June on there.
Uh, I actually spoke to Steve about an hour ago. He was going to call in by his phone.
Okay, uh, roll call complete. Moving on, uh, Roman numeral number four, minutes approval. Uh, at this point here, uh, members of the committee should have access to the twenty December twenty twenty-one meeting minutes that are available on the town's portal. And at this point, I will entertain motions to approve the meeting minutes from the uh twenty December meeting.
I'll make that, Marsha.
Hey, Mr. Twiskey has moved to approve the meeting minutes as written. Uh, looking for a second.
Second.
Uh, who is that?
George Hosey.
Uh, second by Mr. Hosey. Uh, is there any discussion of the meeting minutes? Anyone have any recommended changes? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes as written, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Justwick's eye.
Gary Chmiski, I.
Uh, Gary Schneider, I.
With that, the eyes have it and the meeting minutes are approved. All right, moving on on the agenda, uh, my agenda back up. All right, uh, just as a reminder, tonight is a special meeting, so we'll be limited to items that are on the agenda. Uh, the first item, uh, or our number, Roman numeral number five, a little new school improvement projects for Leder Middle School and Gallup Hill School. So, uh, just quickly here, I'd like to give, uh, uh, Dan Hessler, uh, just let everybody know Wayne Donaldson is, uh, is out this week and will not be at the meeting. I did sneak to him and exchanged a few emails with him. Um, and he talked to me a little bit about the, uh, oh, the, uh, meeting with Sustainable Engineering Solutions, our commissioning agent. So, in order to help us with motion, uh, with item number five on the agenda, uh, Dan, uh, Hessler, you were uh, at the meeting with S E S, is that correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so, uh, as part of number one there, Dan, if you want to give us an update on what's been accomplished since our last meeting, and also mention anything about the S E S meeting as well, uh, to add on to what, uh, uh, Wayne was able to give me verbally. I was not at the meeting, but, uh, uh, but Wayne just did, uh, contact me after the meeting, so. If you wanted, Dan, go ahead and go through, um, uh, performance and work, uh, and updates on things in the schools, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, certainly, first, I just got a text from Steve June, says he'll be joining us in about ten minutes. Um, I'll begin with Legerd Middle School, the, uh, the three items that remain on the punch list. Uh, one item is to install some rails up in mechanical mezzanine. Those rails have been fabricated. Um, the post-ups to get from the ladder that mounts to the wall to get into the mezzanine were purchased and and are waiting for installation. The last item that's over there on miscellaneous metal is to replace the uh enclosure on the stair that goes to the roof. Uh, we generated shop drawings with, uh, I don't know if you recall, we went outside and hired another miscellaneous metals contractor to complete that work. And, uh, and he's generated the shop drawings for that. I submitted the shop drawings and and Wayne took a look at them and had some comments. He wants to revise what was in Silver Petricelli's proposal, reduce the size of the door, uh, and add some, uh, add a tube to make that a slightly different detail. So I'm awaiting actually Wayne coming back next week to, uh, to confirm up exactly what we're gonna draft up and and resubmit there. Um, other work that occurred in place was the.
Uh, hey, just a quick comment, uh, Dan, on the change to that 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 Wayne's asking for, uh, is Silver Petro still gonna get, um, that back to ensure that it complies with, uh, you know, where's our protection to ensure that, um, you know, they're, you know, obviously they designed it and their architects and design engineers should be designing it to code. Um, is, are there any, you know, code issues here that we have to, or anything that we have to ensure is correct?
Uh, that's actually what Steve and I were speaking, talking about about an hour ago. Steve is okay with the, with the changes that Wayne has proposed. Essentially, he wants a less robust door. And in order to, you know, to to quell the concern there is we will develop another set of shop drawings, submit them to Silver Petricelli for approval before we go to fab.
Okay, that's all I wanted to just make sure to protect ourselves there. All right, thank you. Keep bones, sir.
Okay, so, um, the other item of work is there was a warranty request on one of the air handlers to replace one of the doors that had seen damage in one of the wind. Uh, a door was left ajar in a wind event. Um, that door took some time to come in upwards of six months and actually came in, was was replaced, uh, last week on Friday. So the, the three outstanding punch list items, one I described as miscellaneous metal. I did not make any headway on the shade chains, um, and getting someone to reattach those in a different mechanism. Um, and then we have the last item, which is the ceiling tile, which, you know, I guess we're gonna agree to disagree in that, uh, you know, we've been back to set those tiles three, four times and, um, and there's just a concern that, you know, they're falling out in in random locations. So that's the status, uh, Ledger Middle School at Gallup Hill. Um, again, we have, let's see, we have three punch list items on that site. One is involves light switches and, uh, and getting a new replacement light switch. Well, that fell hand in hand with the commissioning log, which had, um, half a dozen rooms that had, I, issues back two and a half years ago that that recently, uh, well, I'll describe that more for you later, but that one particular punch list item has been scheduled. We have a guy from, uh, from Ferguson um, and Hubble scheduled for the week of the thirty-first to address those items that were on the commissioning log as well as that punch item. The other punch list item is the pads at the gym. Um, if you recall, I had to go out and purchase those directly. I did that about six, seven weeks ago now and uh, the delivery was now, uh, was supposed to be the last week of December, but product, uh, product manufacturing delays occurred there, so they gave me a new delivery date of February sixth. So we'll be able to install those, uh, you know, pending no other issues, um, at that point. And the third item on the punch list was the radon fan and tying that into the B M S. Um, what you may, I don't know, if you know, or if you recall, Steve, before you left on, uh, after the last meeting and before you left, I sent out an email to yourself and Mr. June uh, and Wayne, and I shared the proposal and I asked the question of, do you really want to do this work and do you want to do this work out of, out of, uh, construction funds? For the benefit of the committee, I don't know. I spoke to Steve June about it and he, uh, he apologized. He didn't do a review on that cost and and he'll tell you the same when he gets on the call. But part of my mission here is to wrap up finances for you. And I have that as an open item as to whether we're going to proceed issue, issue change order and work that into the contract uh, with Action Air, or, you know, you can still purchase that through the construction budget, just not through O N G. Um, and if Wayne wants to manage that directly.
Right, and, uh, Dan, just to make sure I understand this correctly, I did see an email and I know that Wayne was taking a look at the, that cost did seem very, very high for J C I to do that work. Um, and, you know, my understanding is that the B M S monitoring of that, um, going back to make sure I understand this correctly, was not included in the original package that was given to J C I, correct?
Right, I had, um, made a, a bid error in the addendums that were issued, uh, removing that scope of work from J C I or Action Air through J C I's contract.
Right, so it's not as though J C I should have done it because they would have bid on it when they bid on the work, where Action Air bid on the work and their subcontractor, J C I was involved. That was not an item in the specification for them to have bid on.
Right, it was actually specifically removed.
Right, and we may be better off just doing this outside the project, um, because I know that Wayne is investigating, um, um, you know, B M S contractors and other things that this may be simpler to do outside of that. Um, you know, right, right now, that, um, the, the fan is operating. It's just a matter of getting, uh, it tied into the B M S to know, uh, that we're actually seeing the the differential pressure.
Right, if it ever stops running, right? If the motors, you have four fans on Gallup Hill and if any one of them drops out, um, then you wouldn't see a differential pressure and the, you know, would send a note to the B M S system.
Right, because that, that sensor is actually a differential pressure sensor and not a electrical power to the fan sensor.
That's right. That's the way J C I quoted the work. Um, I offered that, you know, they could do the work using a circuit tap. Um, they preferred, you know, financially, they said it really didn't make a difference. And so, you know, getting, getting that pressure monitor was the way they preferred to quote the work.
Yeah, but obviously that's just another component to fail over time and have to be replaced as well. And we had to find out how we monitor that on the other schools um, that we have. How is that, uh, how is that monitored at Ledger Middle?
Uh, it is not.
I didn't think it was.
Right, at Ledger Middle School, that the spec was written differently and it and it didn't require the contractor to do the work. So we have to, we did install the fans, the fans are running over there.
Right, we had to ask the. And I don't know, Steve June has joined us, but I don't believe that there is a requirement to monitor that. Um, but I will, based on my discussions with Wayne, but I'll have to go back and ask again.
Yep, I don't believe so.
Okay. Great, sir.
So the only, um, the only work that that physically occurred um, at the Gallup Hill School is we investigated the leaks. There's, uh, there's two air handlers that are, that are taking on water or or the roof membrane in the vicinity of the air handlers are taking on water, so, um, we spent time over there, Action Air spent time over there. Looking, we could find nothing with the roof handling equipment that's taking on water, so, um, so now it's back to the roofer to try to find, you know, a pinhole in in the membrane.
And Greenwood has been responsive, talking to Wayne that they've been coming out and, uh, um, and this is warranty work on the roof.
Right. And Action Air has actually offered to come out when Greenwood comes again to, uh, you know, to to be there to try to bring the thing to closure.
Okay, so Dan, based on that, um, I counted those punch list items and of the number that you had said have been cleared of things. Um, I have, I have many more fingers than we have open punch list items, uh, and and we too, uh, want to get this thing, uh, closed out with the state. So my question to you is, I do have a change order request two, two, seven, R, one on the agenda for tonight. Is this the final change order provided that we do not do a J C I change order for the Gallup Hill School?
Uh, I have two other pending cost issues. Um, the first is at the Gallup Hill School, if you recall, you had one room that gets too hot and one room that doesn't get hot enough. What I've learned after the, after the last B C meeting is that Silver Petricelli did indeed develop a narrative description of a scope of work to provide fin-to radiation in the room that doesn't heat up enough and to provide an exhaust fan in the boiler room. I don't think that you want to run that through us, or I guess I would be more straightforward in saying I don't prefer to run that through the contract with O N G, uh, only because we're trying to wrap up here. If you did choose to run that through us, we would have to get a quote from Action Air, who I guess gave a budget to Silver Petricelli when they developed it, but I don't have a copy of that. And then we would have to, you know, do a process of change order.
Right, the, the only, the only concern about, now, if we're talking about adding an exhaust fan to a boiler room, tell I just went like through the wall, the exhaust outside?
Yeah, the, uh, you know, the narrative does just describe putting a, you know, ductwork through the building.
Okay, and.
Power involved.
All right, and again, that narrative would have to be turned into a design package, which would then have to go out for bid and we can be talking a couple of months there just on that alone, whereas opposed to having that done outside the project. And the fin tube, is that coming off the existing, uh, a hot water recirculation?
Yeah, the narrative describes just coming off of the, the room below and coming up through the floor to, to, to provide heat to that room.
And that would just be a thermostat on offset lower than the, uh, the building thermostat, I take it?
Yep, it says balance the flow to one G P M, provide wall mounted thermostat, integrate into the B M S.
Okay, so that's actually tie that back into the B M S as well. So that would have to go along with the, potentially with the, uh, with the fan, uh, radon fans. We could do that the same.
You'd have a, you'd have a B M S component to this change, um, as well as, you know, controlling that exhaust fan would also be a B M S system integration. And I suggest you do that, you know, regardless, because you want to be able to monitor that room, um, and the, and the valve, like we do all the other valves.
Understand. I'm surprised they didn't go with, uh, radiant, uh, ceiling tiles or something in there, just to make it simple, but, uh, nonetheless, um, it's probably more efficient, so. All right, uh, I will have to speak with Wayne about that and ask, uh, address the committee on those decisions on which way to go on that, but I think the best solution may in fact be to not do that through O N G. We have, we don't have, we, plus we have to pay S P A to develop a, uh, all the specs and design for that. Um, the only other potential issue is that the as-built would not reflect these two items, um, but.
Right.
That's pretty minor.
Right, you could mark them up. Um, and S P A developed this, this narrative, you know, there, I don't know if they would have already, you know, built that into the hours or or how they're going about billing you for or the, for that design element.
All right, I don't see Steve June on yet, so he won't be able to address that. Does anybody have any questions for Dan about what he's talked about so far before we talk about any other items on the agenda?
Yeah, Steve, Sean Marshall, I got a question for Dan.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Dan, the, uh, and the rooms would have sealed, or the tiles are falling out of the ceiling. Is the ceiling grid properly secured with tieback wire and rivets?
Yeah, we're, and that's where the difficulty we have here is that, you know, we've gone through and we've cut tighter tiles in some of these corner conditions, um, like I said, on on a few different occasions. The, the difficulty in in the Ledger Middle School is that the specified grid is a fine line grid. And so when you get to the corner condition, it's only sitting on that grid by, you know, by the eighth inch on the lip of the fine line. And it doesn't have a lot of, uh, bearing. It can move on the perimeter exterior walls. So it can jump off that eighth inch shelf that's on the fine line. And one of the issues that we've heard from. Uh, yeah, but, but where they fall out and how many is, is been something that I'm unable to, you know, get a handle on. We, uh, we go out there and and, you know, there might be a half a dozen tiles, uh, that Wayne's talked about, but the fellows have propped them back in, um, so it's difficult for us to, to resolve. And I don't really understand the extent of it. I don't think we're talking more than, you know, a half a dozen tiles and and if, you know, I can't, I can't address trying to correct those if they don't, if I'm not away made aware of exactly where those are. Uh, one of the other issues at the Ledger Middle School is, is the, the roof structure so far, you know, we have rake roofs. And, um, and so some of those tieback wires, some of those seismic wires are, are really long. And the roof structure can shift, you know, the building can, can move slightly.
Okay, uh, John, do you have anything else, um, or any other members of the committee have questions on what he's covered?
No, no, sorry, Steve, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so, uh, Dan, uh, Dan, again, I agree with you. Our goal is to get this closed out as soon as possible. Um, with that, um, you said that Steve June had just put together that narrative. I hadn't seen that in an email yet. Has that been sent out of the email or is that still being socialized?
Um, it was actually something I, when Marty was, was joining us in the commissioning meeting, he mentioned that he had sent it out. And so I said, really? Because I wasn't aware of it. So what he did is, he sent it to Action Air to get a, an estimate, um, a budget number for it and Steve June and I didn't, you know, we weren't looped in on it, so that's where I got a copy of it.
Understand, and we may actually be much better off initially of just having Wayne go out, get either A, self-perform some of the work, uh, he may be able to get uh, exhaust fan himself, but the, uh, the hydronic, we obviously want, um, whoever is doing his H V A C work uh, to do that, um, unless there's an issue with warranty, we'll have to talk to Wayne about that.
Well, the, uh, the exhaust fan, I just don't want to minimize that scope of work so that you understand that, you know, this is from the narrative. It's got a V F D. You know, it's, it's not a small, you know, it's not a bathroom exhaust fan.
Okay, so this is more complicated than I expect. All right, no problem. Well, we can, either way, we can still process that work, even if it's done by Action Air outside the contract. Uh, because this is not part of the original design, um, and, uh, you know, therefore, uh, you know, we are, we are, we do run the risk of that small amount of money being, uh, not reversible, but the longer term costs of not closing the project probably uh, would make that moot. So, uh, I will speak with Wayne as soon as he gets back, um, and when we have a copy of that, um, from the, uh, it was discussed in the commission meeting, we'll be able to make a better decision. Speaking of the commissioning meeting, uh, we've been holding off on paying this, uh, invoice for, uh, for S E S until after that commissioning meeting was held, um, which I understand was held, uh, earlier in the month. Can you give us some feedback on that meeting?
Uh, yep, I had, uh, I had assembled the meeting and and actually set up the invite and and Zoom call so that we did get good contractor turnout. Um, I had representation from S E S and Wayne. Um, Marty was able to attend, Addie was not. We had the plumbing contractor, the electrical contractor, the security contractor. Um, J C I was there, Tel Data was there, and H V A C was there. Um, so a productive meeting in that we, you know, we recognize that we had a commissioning log that at Ledger Middle School got relatively closed out. When I say relatively, there was a half a dozen items that needed to be backchecked, but personally I had backchecked them and I knew that they, that the work was done. So getting through that checklist was part of the meeting, and then the second half of the meeting revolved around, you know, what are the current concerns, uh, that, that are at the school? And Wayne did make, uh, you know, several comments about the, there's a smell in the, the school. They're getting a smell from, nobody, I wasn't aware of it until that meeting, that, uh, that in the science labs, they're getting some odor. Action Air also had been advised, uh, to go back and backcheck, and they actually went back this past week on Friday when school was a half day, uh, they went back and they insulated an elbow in one of the corridors that, uh, that was identified and and brought up at that meeting. The, the smell that's in the building, um, is potentially air coming off of the sanitary vent that's getting dragged back into an air handling unit. You know, that's an easy fix, so to speak, in that the typical fix is to elevate, that right now the pipe comes through the, the roof assembly and comes up about eighteen, twenty inches. Bring that up to six feet, seven feet up, and typically that smell won't get, you know, downdrafted over to the surface of the membrane and over to the intake of the air handler. Other than that, there was some items of, uh, that needed to be verified and backchecked over at, uh, at the school. And Ledger Middle School didn't have, you know, really too much to, to follow up on, uh, other than that and comments that, uh, that Wayne wanted to, to follow up with on H V A C. Um, one is for nuisance, uh, what's called a freeze stat, which is a device that protects the unit from freezing if, um, you know, in a, in a, in a warm-up mode. If, uh, you know, if the outside air that's getting dragged back into the unit is too cold and it will freeze the coil, it'll, it'll trip us free step. Um, and he's looking for somebody to, to help out in that. He wants to just, you know, so we asked, uh, of Wayne to provide some more information. Um, he had a concern about one of the V F Ds, uh, that was been addressed already by, by Action Air. And again, it's only the, it's only the smells that, uh, that Wayne had a concern over at the middle school.
They, uh, Dan, on the smell, did they isolate which of the sanitary events they think it's coming from?
Yeah, yep, they, uh, when Action Air was there, they actually took pictures. They, they showed me and they, they sent me a letter. Um, you know, documenting the fact that they finished up the few items that, that Wayne had identified and then, you know, clued me into, you know, which pipe needed to be raised up.
So we're talking five-inch PVC, one-length pipe here?
Uh, yeah, probably four-inch pipe.
Okay, understand. All right, uh, no problem there. All right, I'm glad that meeting, I know we had to reschedule that meeting due to COVID on some folks, but I'm glad it was able to be held. Uh, that should allow us to make, uh, our final payment. We were holding off the S E S on, so excellent. Okay, uh, any, anyone have any other questions for Dan? Uh, Lisa, before I move on, have you heard anything back from finance?
So, yep, so Marcia stated, um, it's still going on. They're still on old business. She said, would you feel comfortable with asking Steve if he will send me the R F P for audit work?
Uh, I will, yes, I will send that to her, um, and, uh, would you just, uh, ask Marcia to call me tomorrow uh, on my cell phone? And I just want to talk to her before she departs as finance director. I just want to confirm where some things are stored in Town Hall and that those things have been turned over predominantly old, uh, records from way before you were involved, Lisa, back when George Bang, uh, Bancroft, Mark Bancroft, George, George was famous. American, George Bancroft, we named a submarine after him. Uh, Mark Bancroft was, uh, was working with the committee. Uh, I just want to, originally Roxanne was storing that stuff out in the annex, and I just want to find out where that stuff is. Old records will need for the audit.
Okay.
If you would ask her to call me, that would be wonderful, and we'll, uh, we'll ask the new finance director to join us, um, at our next meeting. Excellent. All right, uh, with that, let me get back on to our agenda, uh, just a moment. All right, uh, so we are on, uh, Roman numeral number five, item three, this is a motion approved change order number two, two, seven, revision one, Roman G, three. We talked about this at our last meeting. I expressed some concerns. We were paying for the, uh, same work twice. Uh, we had a long discussion about this at the last meeting, and since then, uh, Dan has gone back and re-recorded the change order to have the change order being uh, as discussed at our last meeting where we're doing a back charge for, uh, a part of that to back to, um, Noble, which is the masonry contractor. Um, the, uh, other elements that are mixed in there were good and some coming from C M contingency. Um, so that's been taken care of per our discussion at the last meeting as listed in our meeting minutes. Um, and, uh, with that, uh, that change order, uh, two, two, seven, Romeo, one is now, uh, in order. Uh, it is a zero-dollar change order in that there's some charge against C M contingency, um, which, uh, makes it a zero. So with that, I'll, uh, I move that we approve a change order as written. Also. Uh, second by Mr. To, I think it was Mr. Twinsky, was it not?
Yep.
Okay, uh, motion's been made, motion's been seconded. Any discussion on the change order?
Uh, Steve, I made a mistake on the change order.
You did?
Yes, um, so I took too much money away from the trade. Last meeting, we agreed that we would take fifty percent of the washdown cost, and I took fifty percent of the, the cost. So I have a, I have an R two that is still a zero-dollar change. The difference to the document is that the back charge to Noble Construction is two thousand seven hundred dollars, um, which increased the, uh, the contingency, you know, replacement of by the same amount, so the C M contingency number goes up to six thousand ninety-one.
All right, so with that, with, with that then, Dan, I think that the, uh, in order to keep this clean against our meeting, what we're voting on here, uh, since you, this is not the final change order, you did say you had two other things to, to close out here. Uh, let's represent this as two, two, seven Romeo two at our next meeting, and we'll get that taken care of. At least you know the dollar values, you can start processing all the other final paperwork.
Yep, that's.
And as a, as a reminder, you have a stack of change orders for me to put wet ink against, I believe. Uh, if you will contact me and I will arrange a time to, uh, what works best, whether you FedEx them to me, I sign a stack and FedEx them back or something, we'll figure that out. Okay, all right, uh, so with that, I'm moving on to Roman, uh, item four is re, uh, five, six, and seven, by the way, are really under number four. So we're now on to, uh, Roman numeral five, item four, now item five. This is, uh, of the Sustainable Engineering Solutions, uh, invoice three, one, six, zero for Leder Middle School in amount of one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and twenty cents for occupancy and operations phase. We have tabled this now for, I think, five meetings and, uh, Lisa gets emails all the time from S E S, and we did tell them, hey, we're waiting for this meeting. It's now been held. Um, so with that, I move that we approve the S E S invoice, three, one, six, zero, in the amount of one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and twenty cents.
Uh, Jerry Twiskey, I'll second that.
All right, seconded by Mr. Twinsky. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice as, uh, uh, As moved, uh, certified by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica with I.
Jerry Tominsky, I.
My Gary Schneider, I.
Eight upon a herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Jose, I.
All right, with that, the eyes have it, and that, uh, motion is approved. All right, uh, next item here, um, for, just for, again, keeping things clean administratively, uh. The AIA application that's attached to the link is actually for, uh, a, uh, looks like a. Town clerk invoice for a Mr. Mark Shelvin.
Yeah.
Who paid a hundred and forty dollars for something, um. Whatever he recorded, anyway, um. That is not what we, uh, need to vote on, so, um, we'll roll the Silver Petraselli Associates, uh. Invoice for Gallup Hill School to our next meeting, um, we'll probably just have two for Gallup, uh, next week or next month. Uh, so with that, I'll move on to number seven, um, which is, uh, AIA application. Two one two seven one seven for Silver Petraselli Associates in the amount of seven hundred and twenty three dollars. And the, uh. Let me get that one back up on my screen here, just give me a second. When I had it. Yeah. That, that, that one is in order, uh, is the correct thing that's attached. Uh, so with that, I move that we make, uh, payment to Silver Petraselli Associates for Ledger Middle School work, uh, per their time materials contract. In amount of seven hundred and twenty three dollars.
Second, Steve Munger.
Said by Mr. Munger, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, uh, uh, as moved, certified by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica with I.
Eric Tominsky, I.
Eric Schneider, I.
Kate upon a herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Jose, I.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it, and the, uh, the invoice is approved. All right, back on the agenda, uh. Okay, uh, funding for Ledger Middle School Auditorium, I have no information to pass to you on that. Uh, nothing further, but I do want to, um. Uh, and and Dan, we're done with work under ONG, you're welcome to, uh, sign off, we haven't seen Steve June. Um, something must have happened to him technically trying to connect. Um, we'll have him at our next meeting. Um, I'm going to move on now and talk about other projects, you are welcome to stay on to these, Dan, if you desire.
I appreciate the offer, but I will, uh, I will take my leave, thank you all.
All right, thank you, Dan, and follow up with me on the things we talked about, please, sir, thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, so we're on room number seven, some of you may be aware of this, I know Mr., uh, uh, Council Marshall is, um, because he was on town council, they voted on this. I did receive correspondence from, uh, the chairman of the town council in a letter dated, uh, thirteen January twenty twenty two. Um, and it just, this is to notify us that at the twelve January meeting, the town council took some actions. Um, and they are referring some projects to the permanent municipal building committee. Um, and I just want to let us know that there's two parts to to everything that's coming our way. The first is, uh, the projects to replace the roof on the bill library of the town hall building itself. And the town hall annex. Um, so those three projects in Leonard's right in the center of town, um, you know, we have, um. Not yet done anything with this project, so however. The town council is putting together as approved resolution appropriating two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars for that. Um, and there will be a referendum, uh, to be held on twenty sixth January. Uh, at six fifteen PM to consider a bonding for those, uh, projects for two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. Um, so I anticipate that, um, as soon as the bonding is approved. Uh, that these projects will be handed to us and on our agenda, we will have to go out to, uh, get bids on these, um. Uh. It's relatively straightforward, other than specifications, we will be working with the town engineer, uh, Steve Maslin on this. And, uh, you know, although it's not required by this, um. I believe that we'll probably be going down the path of. Uh. All three projects, uh, as far as three buildings, the bill library of the town hall and the annex, um, you know. Having them bid together to try to get some economies of scale there. So we'll see, you know, once they mobilize in the area, it may be cheaper for us to do it that way. We'll find out, certainly the built, the, uh, town hall and the, uh. The annex, uh, would probably be done together, we want those roofs to look the same on those buildings. Uh, does anybody have any questions on that, right now, I don't think we have any action until after the, um. The town council would approve the, uh, excuse me, that the town would approve the, uh, the funding at referendum. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, uh, so that will keep the, uh, PNBC busy as we move into the next, uh, year here. The, uh, next item also on the same letter is a, that they also approved a resolution appropriating six million seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. For what is termed here, I will read it, school improvement projects and. Author, and also this would be for bonding, those school improvement projects are, um. Essentially the, uh, Gales Ferry School, believe it or not, that school's been around long enough, it needs a new roof. Um, as well as the, uh. Uh, Julian W. Long School roof and solar projects for those roofs. Uh, Kate, I know that you, um, on the, uh. Facilities Committee for the Board of Ed have a little bit more information on that, is there anything more that you want to share with us on that at this point?
Um, no, and I mean, Steve jumping here if you, you want, but I, I think. That it's just, it's a necessary project, this isn't something that we're doing just because of, uh, a date on a calendar, there, there are real issues that need to be addressed, there's been leaks. Um, and it's just, it's time for the roofs to be replaced.
Understand, and, uh, we have the solar project being tied into that because it makes sense to do that at the same time. Uh, and, uh, you're going to put a lot of holes in the roof for for solar, but we want to do what we do to the roof, so it all makes sense. Uh, so I anticipate, provided that the, uh, town, um. Even though they've appropriated the funds, they still have to get the, you know, we don't want to pay for that out of a one year town budget. So, um, I anticipate, that will go to, um. Uh, referendum on the twenty second of February. Uh, does anybody know why we're not just doing one referendum instead of two, because. There, they take time and money. Everybody know why?
I have no information to share on that.
Yeah, I know that's not a board of ed thing, because paying for everything is, for buildings at least, is a town council thing. Um, John, do you have anything that you can share with us on that?
Go on in the dark as well, Steve.
I'm sorry, you broke up, sir.
No, I, I don't know why we're doing two instead of just one, um, I don't know.
Well, either way, one's coming up on twenty sixth January, so it's going to roll down this way, um. The, uh, but either way, uh, these, these referendums, um. Will be, uh. Actually, I'm just going to look here again at the way it's worded on here. Uh, hell, virtual, oh, we're going to have, um, the town meeting for the two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars does not require voting machines. That's going to just be. A virtual town meeting. And you know how those things go, um. But then we have, uh, because it's, you know, we're talking six point seven million dollars, that's going to go to, uh. Go to referendum for the town, and then at that point, then we will go through the process of getting. Um, you know, engineering estimates for the roofs, uh, what's involved there, specifications have to be drawn up, and we'll be going through the process for that, um. And we're, and also in the same, uh. Big, long resolution that's, uh. Multi pages long, it also states, uh, uh, you know, it charges the PNBC with with the project, and it also. Uh, charges the Board of Ed to file the necessary ED, uh, four nine forms to ensure we get reimbursed. So, um, uh, Steve, do you or Kate have anything further to add with respect to the, uh, improvements at the schools?
Uh, not that I can remember, no.
Hey, Kate, anything further?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, okay, I, again, this is a special meeting, so I'm just taking a, another look at the agenda, I think we've covered everything on the agenda for tonight. Uh.
I just wanted to let you know, Steve, that Marcia, um, did text me back and she said she will give you a call tomorrow.
Excellent, all right, thank you so much, uh, does anybody else have anything to share tonight? Uh, hopefully the five thirty meeting time is working a little bit better, I know Steve Munger, it was a real issue for you. Kate, you always had an issue with the five o'clock being a little early as well, um. So hopefully this is working out well for us.
Yes, no more calling you as I'm running up to Shipyard Hill.
No more talking while I'm driving home.
Okay, well, this is all about safety, um, so we're, um, we're, I think in this case here, we're all in better shape. All right, thank you so much, uh, and snowstorm coming tonight, so we get a chance to exercise in town snowplows. Um, and, uh, everybody be safe and, uh, we'll talk to you at the next meeting.
I tell you, good night.
Good night.
Okay, good night.